For being here, and I'm going to turn it over to City Manager Ron Whitlatch.
Thank you, Council President and councilors. We're here tonight to have a work session, give you an update on our strategic plan. As part of that plan, we give two updates yearly. Along with that, we'll also be going into our legislative actions that we took this year. So it's kind of a two-for-work session. So we'll get started. On the agenda tonight, we have basically what our mission vish- mission vish- vih.
We're starting off great.
So, yeah, the thing on the first one there, mission, vision, and values. Okay, we got that. Kind of a recap of the strategic plan themes, and then strategic plan by the numbers, action item updates, what we've done to date, and then kind of our next steps in moving that forward. And from there, I'll let Kelly kind of walk you through some of that stuff, and then we'll get into the meat of it.
So for those of you that were on council last summer and fall, you'll remember this image. This is the mission, vision, and values and goals that were developed through the extensive collaboration between council and staff. And these helped really guide the action items that were put together through the numerous focus groups that we did with staff to create, basically, the work plan that we are doing over the next five years to progress the city forward, to implement council's vision and goals and mission for the organization. So we developed the action items. There are a total of 51, and they are separated out of the focus groups, focus areas of community safety, community services and cultural opportunities, engagement and connection, fiscal sustainability and economy, transportation and infrastructure as the last one. And each focus area has a significant amount of work within it. But as you can see through the distribution of where the action items lie, there's a considerable amount of work to be completed, mostly within the fiscal sustainability, economy, and transportation and infrastructure categories. However, it is important to note that every single department has their hands within this strategic plan, whether it's within specific action items delegated specifically to them, or within committee work where we're assigning committees to collaboratively work for specific areas to accomplish this work. We have also tried to get this plan moving to sort of separate it out into yearly distributions. And so we have actually utilized an online program to separate it out into about five years and utilize that management program so that everybody is inputting the information to the same spot, so that we have an integrated system and so that everything is able to be recorded and managed, and we have metrics that we can identify and keep track of everything. And so within that program, we have everything distributed year over year. And so the action items are distributed for five years. And so you can see that we have them distributed. It's important to note that the fifth year, all of the action items, or the vast majority of them, are listed as the ones that are like the continue-to-do items. So for example, continue-to-do business visits. So the ones that we're already doing but establishing and maintaining to do so, which is why you see that there's already eight in progress for year five. And year five is also the year in which we're supposed to start the reiteration of a brand-new strategic plan as well. So you'll also see, although we're only six months into the implementation of this plan, we've made a lot of progress in implementing year-one action items. But we've already actually started implementing items within year-two and year-three, which means that as we start implementing, we're identifying those areas in which we've started prioritizing items in different areas as well. And to date, we have already accomplished three tasks. We currently have 21 in progress and 27 still to do. So just six months in, we are well within implementation of our strategic plan, and it is getting fully integrated within the organization. So now, Ron and I will tag-team and go more in-depth into each of the focus areas to talk more specifically about each of the items that are either completed or in progress. And so Ron will kick it off with the first item for the focus area of transportation and infrastructure.
Yeah, so we've, and of course, the council's been made aware several different times that wastewater treatment plant upgrades are a priority. And so we've been working different angles with that, whether it be through lobbying, whether it be looking for grants. We're, if you tie item 1.1 and 1.9 together, that was one of the primary reasons that we started with the COG and Council of Oregon Governments to start looking for grants for us, and that's kind of morphed into grants citywide rather than just the wastewater plant, but that still is ongoing. Some of the things we're looking at, you can see, we've actually given you some one-pagers. These are the items that we used when we're handing them out to representatives that basically give an outline of what the various projects we are have before us, what we're asking for, and kind of what that need is and what it looks like. So these go out, so these are good reference materials for everybody to use so that that messaging stays the same. The facts are all on them, and those are for you guys to be able to use. And we'll continue to look at grants, and we'll continue to look at, we're looking at some regional solutions for wastewater, which we don't know a lot about that right now, but that is another thing that we're actively pursuing, is having some regional stuff to maybe help pay for the wastewater needs. I don't know if that'll vet out or not, but, and with that, I'll turn it back over to Kelly to give you a little more update on some of this other stuff.
Yeah, for some specific grants, we have got through the COG. We have $100,000 grant that we were awarded to do some studies for the Champion Mill site for redevelopment. And we also were awarded last summer a federal grant called the Safe Streets for All Grant, which is a regional grant. That is an awarded grant. We are just slowly waiting for the grant agreement to be provided. So we have had success with that partnership with the COG. We also have item 1.2, which is partner with the Cascade West Regional Consortium to advocate for wetland reform. This is a partnership that I have been a part of for the last several years, and I'm currently on the board of this consortium. We meet quarterly, and we work hand-in-hand with DEQ, the Department of Environmental Quality, the Department of State Lands, which are state agencies, and also the United States Army Corps of Engineers to try to advocate for making things a little bit easier and alternatives to wetlands mitigation or wetland banking to try to make development a little bit easier. We have come up with several ideas throughout the years. Some have had progress. Some have gotten state funding. And we have also worked through the Governor's Office to advocate through their Housing Production Advisory Council, a number of their wetland initiatives that were listed in there. And so we are advocating through lobbying, but also through different projects as well. And so we will continue to be part of that group. And then the last one on here is incorporate infrastructure master plan to replace projects into GIS and better identify projects. This is a project that has come out of the IT department. This is a brilliant idea that is to help kind of streamline work for a lot of our departments and incorporate information into our GIS system so that it's kind of a one-stop-shop system to where we can have information at our hands and incorporated. I will admit, this is on my plate. They, we did a kickoff meeting, and they're really jazzed about it, and I'm the one that's supposed to do the next step, and I haven't done it yet. So we're waiting on me for that one. So, but it is in progress as well, so we're making a lot of progress on this front. So the next focus area is community safety. And Ron, you're starting on this one.
Sure. So one of the things that we looked at that came out of the strategic plan was emergency management, and how well are we trained in emergency management? There's some of us that have had quite a bit of emergency management training, you know, in case of natural disaster, but overall, the organization has, is lacking in that area. So one of the things that several of us have come up with, and also our director team, is to first start out with training all of our staff in the basics of emergency management, and then kind of move it forward from there and get a little deeper into that, have some tabletop exercises probably over the course of the next year, just so that everybody's aware. Each emergency is different, but we want to be able to put people in our emergency operations center that at least have a little bit of background on it, and for those of us that would be manning it, have more of an extensive background. One of the other things that we're doing, you'll see in 4.4 there, we're evaluating the feasibility of reopening the municipal jail. That will be coming to this body in a work session in July with some options there. So that's moving forward. And I think, Kelly, you have the rest.
Yep. So for 4.8 and 4.9, Deila Johnson is really the one in the Police Department that provided me an update on this, so thank you to her for that, and to the Police Department that's obviously doing all this work. And so I'm just going to basically read you what she provided me. So she says that she utilizes the Crisis Team continually. She meets with them on a weekly basis to keep up on any, on anyone that might need services, where we are, where we are with those, and who is currently using and receiving those services. And the Crisis Team has been a huge lifeline for us. And as far as resources, she uses on a continuing basis. It is for, besides the Crisis Team, it is Crossroads Communities and Lebanon Soup Kitchen. As far as shelters for 4.9, she continues to work with Second Chance and the Corvallis Unity Shelter. And there's also now a new alcohol and drug counselor in Lebanon that they're excited to work with as we haven't had one of those for access for quite some time. So there are new resources in Lebanon, and she is leveraging a lot of resources within our community and is doing a lot of great work. And we also have a completed item in this section, which Brandon is in charge of for the Safety Committee this year. So we did reorganize the Safety Committee, and he says that we expanded membership to include two employees from each city facility, and added a staff liaison, and solidified the committee with a charter so that it's more of an operating and solidified committee. So we are moving forward in that committee as well, and that focus area. Next focus area, I think this is all me, is the Community Services and Cultural Opportunities. We have one, one action item of the four in progress, which is continue to review and pursue grant opportunities. And I think a new area to highlight, which is not currently in the strategic plan, I think this was kind of a missed opportunity. This is something that we've actually been working on, I think, since 2018 or 19, but is something that we should probably think about when we're doing the next round of discussions with council goal-setting to maybe talk about incorporating this into the strategic plan, is the Library Capital Campaign for the expansion into the Reading Room and their patio. And so we have actually identified some granting opportunities to help fund this, and she, the Library Director is actively putting together a fundraising campaign. I know that she came and talked to you guys about this in April. And so this is an in-progress project and something that we're actively pursuing grants for as well. So this is kind of a great example of how a strategic plan is definitely an iterative process where, as things come up or as things are further evaluated, they should be considered and incorporated into the strategic plan as well. So next up is engagement in connection. Ron?
So yes, one of the, one of the areas that came out of the strategic plan was engagement in connection. You can see, it's got 10 assigned action items to it. We've got four so far that are in progress. I've kind of taken the develop an external communications strategy and establish communications committee to coordinate and collaborate, and made one committee out of that. There's 10 of us, Julie, nine of us? I can't remember the exact total. One of the first things that you'll see come out of that committee is a communications survey that'll be out on our website in our city buildings, basically asking the public for how they view our communications right now, what could we do better? Is there another platform that we could use? All within keeping, I think one of the goals of the committee was to keep it within staff's reach. So with the resources that we have, without getting too far out there and not spending an atrocious amount of money to try and do this, to keep that in there. One of the other things that we're looking at right now, we've started our branding committee. What does that consist of? Right now, we are trying to get, I think the first step is to get our communications that come out of each department, you know, the memos, the letterheads, kind of have that the same format. Also, our email signatures. It's, that's a big thing to have our email signatures all look the same so that we're not, we do have a tendency to have people try and replicate those and have had some fraud issues. So we're trying to be consistent. That's not going to keep anybody from doing that, but at least it gives the, everybody's email that comes from the city looks the same, and that way, it's a little bit easier for the public to discern, because the one fraud places that we have seen, it does use our information, but it is not in the same order. So those are the things we're working on there. We're working on collaboration with different community partners, and Kelly, you can go into that a little bit more there with that.
Yeah, so this is kind of how we tie in a bit of the economic development work and Ron, City Manager, work together. Ron and I do a lot of tag-teaming on this. So I have monthly meetings with the Chamber of Commerce, the Downtown Association, and a number of prominent businesses. We go to a number of the chambers' monthly lunches. And I also have a monthly lunch with Western University of Health Sciences to make sure that we continue to have connection with them as they continue down their path of doing their developments. Ron also does monthly meetings with the Fire District and the School District to make sure our major organizations in the city are continuing to have communications and working together. So we are regularly working on having those open lines of communication with our major community partners. And, you know, as we do our business visits, we're doing business visits with big businesses, with small businesses, to making sure that we're having those lines of communication open as well. Next focus area is financial sustainability and economy. This one, we have 15 action items. We have made the most progress on this one, with seven currently in progress and two completed. Ron, I think you are starting on this one.
Yes. So one of the things, action item 3.1, explore the sunset of urban renewal areas. That is number 3.1. We've done that through the Northwest Urban Renewal District in adding funds to it and getting that to sunset in 2028. We're also looking at the feasibility of closing the Downtown Urban Renewal District to see if that would free up some additional funds towards the general fund. One of the things also you will see in another work session this summer is explore city facilities. We'll be looking at the potential for City Hall. What does that incorporate? We'll also be talking about the library. I think some of the other things we're looking at is some of our properties that we have currently. What's our use on them? Do we need all these properties? Is there a way that we can consolidate groups of staff? So that's, that's what that explore city facilities is about, and we'll get more into that as we go into the summer, and you get another work session on that.
Did you talk about organizational assessment?
Oh, yes, organizational assessment. So yes, we have started that as well. We have made some change in the, what I'll call, Community Development Engineering Department. We've combined the departments into one and basically have a new supervisor of that department without adding any staff. We believe that that'll create efficiencies. That group works together on a nonstop basis, and having that all-in-one area will be beneficial. It's kind of taken Kelly's role. She's still our planner of record, but as you can see, she's doing a lot with the government affairs and the economic development side of the equation, and that frees up her time, hopefully, to do some more of that as we're moving forward. One of the things that I've asked our director team to do is look internally at your, at your organization, you know, whichever department you're running. Are there things that we can do? Not only are there ways that we can be efficient, but where are we lacking? Are there areas that we really lack, and how do we, how do we adjust for that and within the budget that we have and make things moving forward? Now it's you.
Now it's me. So for 3.10, evaluate solar opportunities to offset costs and generate revenue. This has been a roller coaster of a project over the last year. We have gone through a number of different evaluations. Our latest information on this project is knowledge that we are not going to be able to do what is called virtual net metering. So a large singular solar project on our wastewater plant as a behind-the-meter project to then be able to offset each of our individual meters. That does not mean that we wouldn't be able to do a large project at the wastewater treatment plant, it just would have to be a different type of agreement, or you're talking about, you know, separating it out and doing individual projects at different sites. So with that information, after talking with Pacific Power, we are sort of reevaluating what those options look like, going back to what is our ultimate goal for solar, and making sure that we're reevaluating based off of that ultimate goal. And so once we continue to have those conversations and get down to what those options are, we will be coming back to council with another work session on that. For respond to Business Oregon recruitment based off of site availability, I have been keeping you all aware of this through our City Manager reports. We keep an evaluation of Business Oregon's recruitment through Prospect or Oregon, and we have sites that we regularly evaluate to determine whether or not there's opportunities. When there are, we do our best to put together a timely recruitment and respond to it. This is often one of those scenarios that you put together hundreds of recruitment requests out there before you get a bite. So we're going to continue at it until something works. And then develop a strategy for redevelopment and reuse of the Champion Mill site. We are going to bring a work session to you all for a much more detailed discussion on this this summer, and so I won't go into much detail with this, other than the fact that we are continuing to do environmental analysis on the site. We have two active grants for this, hopefully three soon, and we'll hopefully be able to have a pretty well-rounded discussion in this in the next couple of months. And then finally, the continued business visitation program. We continue to have one of these a month. The last two months, we have been on a little bit of a break due to the Washington DC trip, and then a business visitation was canceled by the business at last minute, but we will continue to pick them up and have one scheduled for this month, hopefully. And then we do have two completed items here. We implemented the city services fee and then did a pretty robust information campaign associated with that, so that's 3.2 and 3.3. And so those are all of the focus areas, I think. And so I think before we go on to what's next, I know I've seen a number of you all writing notes. Do we have any questions for us?
You talked about a Safe Streets for All grant. I didn't catch how much that was.
That's because I don't remember how much it was.
So it's a, it's a regional, the way Safe Streets for All works, in order to be eligible for the construction funding, you have to do the planning funding first. So we're doing a regional planning effort with Millersburg, Albany, no.
Yep.
Albany in it.
Sweet Home.
Sweet Home.
Us.
Us, and there was.
Tangent.
And tangent.
Yeah.
So basically, the grant will hire a consultant to look at our intersections that we, where we want to do Safe Streets for All actual construction project, which ours is slated to be the Crowfoot Cascade Central Mess that's down there, I'll call it. But we have to go through that process before we're actually eligible for the grant process to do the construction. But I think the grant overall was $125,000, and we had $15,000 or $20,000 matched to it. Each city contributed a little bit to it so that we could be in line for that.
Got you. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I got a question on the solar, solar proposal, or whatever you want to call it. Is this going to be one of those self-sustaining things that, so if we have a major power outage, that there's backup on the solar? I know that we have generators and stuff like that in case we have an outage, but would those be used in the event of a?
There would have to be battery.
Yeah.
Included in there. That has not been part of the scope of our review at this point. I know that is something that our Public Works Director has wanted to have included. It just, we haven't gotten that far yet, and it would be dependent on grants to be included in that. And I know that we've been looking at that as part of the wastewater treatment plant.
Yes, we have. It's, right now, we're kind of, even though we've been at this for a year, we've gotten probably, I don't know, seven different responses to the same questions that we've asked. So we're trying to, we've kind of backtracked and went back to PP&amp;L and said, all right, we're, what, what can we do? And then from there, I think, once we have that answer, then we can move forward with, all right, what makes the most sense on these sites? The goal was to, like Kelly alluded to, net meter all of our city facilities, basically come up with net zero by the time you put the solar field in. Doesn't sound like we're going to be able to do that. However, you can do it site-specific, it looks like, and so if we did it site-specific, then we would have to look at what sites that we can actually do that, do that to. Then you'd have to go to a battery system in order to store enough for backup. So there's times of the year, you know, when you'd likely lose power that you may not be able to, I don't know how long the batteries run, I don't have that information, but you'd still end up with a generator, I believe.
Yeah, I think batteries usually double the cost of one of those projects, but I do know that personally, solar is the way to go. I mean, I haven't paid a light bill in three years.
Yeah.
So you've just got to make sure you put up enough batteries.
Yeah, and that's, that's, that's the, that's what we've kind of run up against a little bit, because none of us are solar experts, is trying to find that to get the right information before we spend any money.
Or have an area big enough to handle.
Which, we do have that, but it's just getting all the right information and making it work financially. Yeah.
Are we going to have a work session kind of on that solar project just as an update? Or is that going to get covered in October, strategic plan update? I just, just curious on that. I think we had a work session already.
We had a work session last.
Probably a year.
Summer. Summer. And we have been slowly working on it since then. We have come up against some roadblocks on effective information. And so, I will say that we will work towards a work session. I don't want to guarantee that it will be before October or as part of the council goal setting because we're reliant on other people giving us effective information. But we can work towards that. But the goal is to get to a work session with council to say, here is our effective options to put in front of you.
Okay.
Yeah. We would come back to this body once we have a solid plan in place. Right now, it's too squishy to even talk intelligently about it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Regarding the Champion Mill Site.
Yes.
What kind of environmental studies have been done? At what level?
So, we are only working on a Phase 2. And we are on the second round of Phase 2. There will be three rounds of Phase 2 to be able to get the site fully characterized. And we're working on that with a grant that's been provided by the EPA.
What did Phase 1 reveal?
Phase 1 was just a historical document review. Phase 2 is doing the actual testing to identify whether there's contamination or not. Phase, the first round of Phase 2 has identified that there is a level of contamination, but it's not, it's not the nasty, nasty stuff. So, it's not terrible. But we don't have the entire site fully evaluated. And so, we will have a, we will have a work session on the Champion Mill Site before October. And so, we'll be able to provide you a more robust conversation with more information about the Phase 2 analysis and all that kind of stuff at that point in time. It's not fully in my head right now.
Does Phase 2 include the lake?
No. It is just the site.
That's the question I get more than anything else, is, is the fish safe to eat?
They did extensive studies back, I don't know when that was purchased. It was a long time ago and didn't find any issues.
Yeah.
So, yeah. That's as good as I can tell.
Yeah.
The right number of i's and everything.
Yeah. For sure.
Okay.
Just curious, what's the name and location of the alcohol and drug counselor you're talking about? You know?
I don't. Do you know?
I can follow up with an email to you.
Thank you.
Yes. Okay.
All right.
Next steps.
So, the next steps. So, well, as you can see, we've been pretty busy with this. We fit this in with our everyday, day-to-day stuff and all the stuff that comes up. I'm pretty happy with where we're moving so far with it. There's a lot of momentum on some of these issues. And it's thanks to that lady that's sitting next to me, Julie over there, that's done a lot of this work. So, kudos to her for pushing this and to all the directors that have lifted with us to get it off the ground. I think we talked about the five upcoming work sessions over the next three months. The goal of those work sessions is to give you a big picture, walking into goal setting because there's some, there's some big capital needs. There's some expense out there in how we do this. There's also, you know, timing and staff availability. You know, these are big projects and they are heavy lift projects. So, we want to make sure you have all the information when we walk into the goal-setting session. And you can prioritize those things so that we can take off on them in the priority that you set. So, that's coming up. And council goal-setting is October 8th from noon to 5:30 PM. And that's on a council day. We did that intentionally so that we can just walk right into council rather than try to get two different days. It'll be a long day, but our first one was all day, so.
It's my birthday, too.
We'll sing you a happy birthday while you're there. Yeah.
We'll get you cupcakes.
Who brings the cake?
I make you good, that way.
You've got to bring your own cake.
So, yeah, unless there's any other questions on the Strategic Plan Update, we'll continue moving forward and get prepped for a summer full of work sessions.
Okay. Next up, Government Affairs.
Yeah, next up, I think Sean, are you also, or Kelly, are you leading it?
Ron's starting it, and then I'm going, and then Ron, and then that guy's, that guy's talking too.
Okay, wonderful.
Perfect. Government Affairs. So, we've got an agenda here. Work session number two, again, the twofer. So, in the agenda, why we initiated the program, kind of the work plan and scope of efforts, meeting with state legislators, kind of an update on what we learned in Washington DC. I believe our wonderful lobbyist Sean's going to give us some political climate in the legislative session. And then we'll get into next steps on this and move it forward. The why. What this really started out with, while we have the council legislative actions each year, we really started pushing this because of the need for, at the wastewater treatment plant, in terms of funding. So, we, that was our primary focus when we started. Since then, it's grown legs, long legs, I would say. And we're getting into more policy direction and things of that nature. So, and that ties into what the legislature's doing in terms of how it affects city operations with policies that come out and gives us an opportunity to at least weigh in on some of the bills and at least have our voice heard there. You know, we get a lot of unfunded mandates, federal and state level. That's driving, I would say, probably, I guess, probably $30 million to $40 million of our wastewater need right now in terms of biosolids. Gives us opportunities for direct appropriations, although in this climate, not likely, probably. We don't know. But we're at least advocating for it. And then on top of that, we're advocating for the council city priorities, the council and city priorities as we're up at the state legislature and also on a federal level as well. So, that's kind of the why of it. And I'll let Kelly get into the details of what we've done and how we've done it.
So, once we started getting into everything, we realized we didn't know much of what we were doing. So, we brought Sean on board and started making a work plan to start putting this work together. And he started really walking us through building a legislative platform and government affairs program for the city. And we really work hand-in-hand with Sean to sort of catalyze his expertise and the city staff's expertise to get us going. And really, what we do is, we use Sean for his expertise in the Capitol Building, for his lobbying expertise, for his political savviness, and his ability to be boots on the ground. And then we utilize our staff's expertise in terms of the technical expertise of what we do, the government side of the equation, our ability to analyze the bills. And we bring it together to be able to really work the system to the best of our ability. And it seems to have been working really well so far. We've made more strides than I was expecting us to make this first year. But what we've really been focusing on so far is building relationships and maintaining them, which is a bit more tedious than I think any of us were expecting it to be, but is an incredibly important role and responsibility. And advocating for council's policies and priorities through public testimony and repeated conversations with representatives. And in future slides, we'll show you kind of how we have done that. We have had direct collaboration with the governor's office this year. I had previously been working with the governor's office on some housing items. And we have been able to further catalyze that relationship with going to legislative days that Sean had taken us to and setting up meetings with the governor's office. And then we were able to work directly with them and provide information on their legislative concepts before they even introduced them during the session. So, we were able to get direct input from our small city into their legislative concepts before it was even proposed as a bill. So, that was something that we've never done before. And to be able to have our little thumbprint on it was exciting. And then being able to advocate for direct appropriations, which was our main goal this year. And we've just sort of expanded far beyond that. And so, in terms of how we have sort of implemented council's priorities, if you all remember, for those that were on council last summer, we brought forward the League of Oregon Cities 21 Priority Proposal for Policies and asked council to vote on your top five. And that top five was infrastructure funding, the 2025 Transportation Package, a permanent fix to recreational immunity, behavioral health enhancement, which was really just a fix to Measure 110, and then full funding and alignment for housing production. And so, while we've been doing all of this work, we have been maintaining our focus on those priorities. And so, there has been House Bill 3031, which was the governor's infrastructure bill. And we were directly working with the governor's office to provide our input on that bill and how we thought that they should be looking at infrastructure more holistically than just simply pipes in the ground. And that they needed to consider infrastructure as wastewater treatment plants and water treatment plants because if you are at capacity or you have a failing plant, then it doesn't matter if you have pipes in the ground because you can't make water or you can't clean water. And so, although they maintained that it has to be pipes in the ground, as part of this build, they did allow for a path forward that if you can make an argument that your plant is tied towards housing production, you can actually try to tie your funding request towards that. And so, there was enough of us, Lebanon, as well as many other cities, that were making that same argument that we were able to make that change in that bill. So, we were part of that, that little minute change. We didn't quite get everything that we wanted, but we were able to make some modifications to it. And then obviously, we did the direct appropriations request through Jamie Kate's office and Cedric Hayden's office as well. In terms of the 2025 Transportation Package, the mayor went to the roadshow that they were doing for public testimony for this package. And we also submitted letters of support and continue to submit letters of support for this item as it goes through the final phases of the legislative session. For recreational immunity, we did submit letters of support for this as well as direct communications to our representatives. The good news is, this seems to be a done deal. I think it's already passed. And so, we were successful, all cities were successful in making sure that this moved forward and has a permanent fix. Behavioral health enhancement, this was not something that we had any knowledge on. So, we weren't very successful in doing much with this, but we'll do better next time. And then full funding for, and alignment for housing production. I've kind of talked a lot about this already. We provided a lot of testimony in general on housing this year. There has been a lot of bills on housing. And some of them, we have provided a lot of testimony against what has been provided. They have had a lot of bills that have been focused on like permit processing timelines that would affect our capacity to be able to process everything. And so, we have made sure that it aligns with council's goals and priorities that, you know, home rule stays with us and that kind of thing. So, we have done our best to maintain council's priorities. And one work session that we alluded to on the last, on the slide in the strategic plan but haven't talked about is legislative platform work. We intend to come forward probably in September to do a more extensive legislative platform discussion with council to do some more extensive work to identify more broadly what council's general legislative platform is. So, when we go and do this work, we're going to have a more extensive policy platform to be working off of. So, you have all that. Ron, was this you?
Yeah.
Yes. So, you can see from this sheet, kind of, this just breaks down what we did in terms of legislative affairs. We had several days up at the legislature for city days. We had over 20 meetings with state representatives, various state representatives. We've been tracking over 100 bills this state session. That's been pretty daunting. Given verbal public testimony five different times, we've offered 20 different written letters. And you can see from there all the different subjects that we provided testimony on. And I won't get any deeper than that because we're going to run out of time if we do.
Yeah. So, then the DC trip, this was a pretty daunting and extensive trip that we did. I put up the schedule because I was awfully proud of the schedule that we put together. It was tight, it was packed, and it was extensive. In two and a half days, we had eight meetings that we had. We had every single meeting that we scheduled. None of them were canceled. That is pretty impeccable. And we were able to even reschedule one of the meetings that we had because the security lines were so long. We were standing in it for 45 minutes and moved, I think, 30 feet. And we were still about 200 feet away from the door. But we were able to reschedule the meeting and still be able to have the meetings that we were able to accomplish. And so, I think that they were incredibly productive meetings. I think that it was impressive to me that every single meeting we had, the people that we met with were incredibly engaged. They were always actively writing notes. And they always had a resource to provide to us and something to give us to follow up on. But our main topics of conversation while we were out there, because they were federal legislators, was the drawdown of the San Team River and the impacts of the Army Corps of Engineers on our water treatment plants. And so, that was a major point of conversation for us. But we also talked about infrastructure issues. And since we were out there, one of the issues that was actually brought to us was impacts of grant funding. And although we hadn't had any direct issues with federal grant funding at the time, we did take the opportunity to talk to them about the fact that we don't tend to apply for federal grants because they are too dang hard to apply for. And they're too daunting, and the grant management is too difficult. And so, we were able to have follow-up conversations with them about how they need to make it easier for small cities to be able to gain access to the funds that we give them, basically. And so, they were incredibly fruitful conversations in that manner. And we found out that there was two pieces of legislation that were currently going through the federal government to try to streamline federal granting at that point. Where they are at this point, who knows? But we do have follow-up that we're trying to do on that. But we do, from these meetings, we did get immediate follow-up from Senator Merkley's office with resources. We had several follow-up meetings from that. We did get resources from the Subcommittee on Water Resources and Environment. And so, we got several follow-ups from that. And we were able to get direct connections to the regional offices. And we're planning, and we're setting up meetings with their offices after the legislative session in July. So, it was a worthwhile endeavor. And I think that they were overall impressed that we went out there. It made an impression. I think that it is worthwhile for us to do it again. I think we're having conversations about how often and a more streamlined approach of less people. So, Ron, I don't know if you have anything else to add?
Yeah, I can pretty much add to that.
Perfect. So, now I'm going to turn it over to our lobbyists. Make sure the green light's on.
Well.
Yes.
Can anybody hear me just fine? Great. Good afternoon, council and directors, and Michelle and Ron and Kelly. It's nice to see everybody. Sean Tate, Tate Public Affairs. I don't have a ton to add to what Michelle and Ron have mentioned, and I'm going to stay out of the weeds, but I'm going to talk about three different things, if I can, really quick. First of all, my objectives for Lebanon going into this session were visibility, connections in council, and local advocacy. We did all three of those things very, very well. I was extremely impressed with the availability of your directors when it came to, we got to go to Salem and talk to people, right? I didn't get argument. I didn't say, I didn't get anybody to say, "I don't want to do that," right? Everybody said, "Let's go, and who do we talk to, and what do we talk about?" And it was great. And I can tell you from experience that that's not the norm, right? Most of the time, people say, "No, you go, you go do it, and let us know how it went." It's far more effective to have the people with the boots on the ground telling the story. I've said that over and over, I'll never stop believing it. So that's one quick thing. Connections in council, Kelly alluded to it in her conversation. To get a call from the governor's office, or anybody, and there was Representative Mark Gambo with one of his bills, to get a call from any of those people saying, "What do you think about this, and how would this affect your municipality if we did this?" That's a good thing, right? You want those things to happen, and you get those phone calls when you are visible and when you're engaged. And the local advocacy, I don't need to expand on that. We've been doing a lot up in Salem to make sure that we tie the priorities that we talk about to the state's priorities and make those really important connections. I'm going to talk a little bit about offense, because what we've been doing here is essentially defense, right? When we're tracking legislation, we're watching what people are writing, what bills they're putting forward, and then trying to figure out whether it's something that we want to advance, or whether it's something that we want to stop. There's a real opportunity for this municipality, other municipalities, to make some impactful change locally by playing offense. I've challenged the directors here, and I will challenge the council as well, to come up with some ideas, right, for things that would be a good policy change, that would make sense for the city to pursue, not political-based policy changes, but practical policy issues, the kind of things that come to you when you say, "Gee, if only we could, right, do this with this regulation, it would save a lot of money, or it would save a lot of time," or whatever. We're looking for those ideas. And I'll give you an example of how it can be effective. House Bill 3654, for those of you that don't know, I work with another small group of small municipalities, based primarily in the Midland Valley. We wrote a bill this session, House Bill 3654, which addresses ultimately the affordability of grant programs for small cities, right? One of the chief complaints I got when I started meeting with this group was, "We can't afford the matching funds requirements that it takes for us to apply for some of these grants." So we wrote a bill that has met with some success, and I'm excited to say, knock on whatever this is, that it is still alive. This bill takes existing state grant programs, there are seven of them, right, that range from 40% down to 20% in their matching requirements. And for the city of Lebanon, right, because we've capped the population in this bill at 20,000. For the city of Lebanon, what that means is, for example, a million-dollar grant with a 20% match is what? That's $200,000, right? Well, this bill would take that million-dollar, or that 20%, and lower it down to 12%, okay? And there are matching grant funds out there with much higher matching requirements. So the opportunities to save money on grants is out there, right? I bring this up, A, it's a great bill, and it should pass, and it passed through the House 48 to 1, right? And we're kind of stuck in the Senate. But the fact of the matter is, we've got 52 cities that have identified themselves as people who also care about this issue, and that's how you move something forward, right? We're starting to look at the short session for next year, and you'll notice I have up there in the interim sausage making, right? That's when the sausage gets made. Now is the time that we need to start talking about proactive policy ideas, that we can start developing our coalition around in 2026, and then trying to move forward with in 2027. I think 2026 as a session is going to be behavioral health-focused, and it's going to be a big budget rebalance, right? There's also some talk about conversations limiting the number of pieces of legislation that individual senators and representatives can introduce, but there's still an awful lot of federal uncertainty or state uncertainty with regard to federal budgets and monies that are going to flow our way. So I do suspect that the short session will be rife with some money questions as well. So, anybody have any questions for me? Happy to answer anything I can.
I don't have any questions. I just, I'm going to reiterate something you've told me in the past, and that's that you're either at the table, or you're on the menu, and when it comes to politics and policymaking in Salem and at the federal level. And I just want to say thank you for our team, for making this a priority, and for making sure we're at the table. So just my gratitude for that. Thank you.
My pleasure, and everybody's done a great job. So thank you for all your help.
Okay, next steps. So like I alluded to, we will be doing a legislative platform work session where we will be talking about not just five priorities, but 20, 30, 50, however many we can come up with, and get council's views on them. We are barreling towards the end of the legislative session. We are three weeks to signee die, which is the end of this long drudge of the state session before we get to find out how much we have in bills that are going to affect the city. And we will probably bring you guys a longer city manager report from me about what those bill reports are going to end up being. And then we'll continue doing our work and meeting with representatives and asking for appropriations and finding out if we get our appropriation ask from this year. And then, as Sean talked about, we'll just keep expanding our efforts and hopefully expand to all of the different sectors of our city. That concludes our report, and if you have any questions?
Council have any more questions? If not, we will go ahead and adjourn at 5:58 the work session, and we will reconvene at 6:05 for the regular session. Thank you.
Thank you.
Might help my knee actually. It's like, yeah. Oh, much better.
It's a lot easier on your back.
Anything goes quiet, we're looking straight to you, Michelle, for guidance.
Sorry, we outvoted you.
All right, I'd like to call this meeting to order. Please rise for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, with equal liberty and justice for all.
Okay, will the recorder please take the roll? Council President Steinhebel.
Here.
Counselor Conti.
Here.
Counselor Mann.
Here.
Counselor Salvage.
Counselor McLean.
Here.
Counselor Workman.
Here.
Mayor Jacobo.
Thank you. First up, we have the consent calendar. The following items are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will not be a separate discussion of these items unless a council or so requests. In this case, the items will be removed from the consent calendar and considered separately. First, the agenda, our agenda for tonight, appointments, which include the Budget Committee, Library Advisory Committee, Parks, Trees and Trails Advisory Committee, Planning Commission, Senior and Disabled Services Advisory Committee. Third, approval to award West River and River Park trails. The board minutes from Parks, Trees and Trails Advisory Committee from 219, as well as Planning Commission from 416. Council minutes from our May meeting for both regular and executive session. Is there a motion?
To approve?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a first and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Before we get started, we do have an item on the agenda I would like to move forward at this time, and that's Judge Wade's contract update. I believe the judge is here. There he is. If there are no objections, we will proceed with that adjustment. Do I have any objections from council on moving this up?
Nope.
Okay, thank you. This way we can, you know, keep his time in check here. Judge Wade, would you like to come forward? So we recently completed, the council recently completed Judge Wade's evaluation, and the evaluation process really affirmed what many of us, I think, already know, and that Judge Wade approaches the bench with fairness, with consistency, and a strong commitment to justice. This was reflected in both the feedback from his staff at the Justice Center, at the Lebanon Municipal Court, as well as in the council remarks. So City Attorney Trey Kennedy, would you like to summarize any changes that were in that contract?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I love saying that, Madam President.
Thank you.
After an excruciating five minutes of negotiation with the judge, we came to a new contract for two years. The only real differences were really making it easier on the pro temp judge situation, because reality is, is Judge Wade hasn't really needed a pro temp judge. He sets his calendar so that if he's gone for a judge's conference or something like that, he just doesn't have court. And the old contract required two at all times, and it was kind of just unnecessary. So we simplified the pro temp judge situation, and then we also, the only other change was the, he didn't even ask for it, but we suggested, and he agreed to, simply the Cola adjustment that the other directors have received over the last two years, as an increase to his salary. So those are the only changes, and with that, I would recommend that we approve the new two-year contract with Judge Wade. And since he's here, I don't know if he has any comments or would like to address the council. But you do need to go green.
Judge, if you could turn the mic to green? There we go.
My mic in court doesn't have it in light.
Thank you. I don't have any specific comments to make, other than I wanted to be here in case any of the council people had questions of me, I would be available. Other times, I can be available as well, but certainly wanted to be available tonight in case there was some question about that anyone might have.
I appreciate you being here tonight, and again, I think just it underscores your dedication to the service for our city and to the courtroom. And I know when I've visited your courtroom in the past, what I saw was you treat everybody with dignity and respect, and it's something I know that this council values. So were there any questions for the judge from council?
No, we appreciate you.
Okay. With that, then, is there a motion to approve the judge's contract?
I'll make a motion to approve Judge's contract.
Second? Okay. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you again. Thank you for being here.
Thank you, Your Honor. You kind of look like a defendant sitting there.
This feels a little backwards, probably.
Maybe we can put you under oath.
I do have a gavel.
Thank you very much. Appreciate, I think, I will make a comment. I think that you're allowing me to continue in this position, suggest, I take it as a vote of confidence that we're doing a good job, not just myself, but my staff, as well as doing a good job over there, and I appreciate the confidence that the council has bestowed myself and my staff.
Well, thank you. Thank you again.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, so moving on, we actually have no presentations scheduled for tonight, which means we will move directly into public comments. So citizens, I do have three comment cards so far. Citizens may address the council by filling out one of these testimony comment cards that are in the back over there, and handing it to our city recorder, Julie. Each citizen is provided up to five minutes to provide comments to the council. The council may take a couple minutes, two minutes, to respond or to ask any, excuse me, clarifying questions. The city recorder will accept and distribute written comments at a speaker's request. We do have this fancy high-tech timer in our new building here that we're meeting in, so when you see red, that means your time is up, and you get the yellow mark for, I think, when you have a minute left. So first up, I have Louis Rucker with Rogers Towing, and after that, or in tandem, I'm not sure how you want to approach this, but I also have Sean Rucker. Would you like to provide comment?
I'm Sean.
So can you please have a seat at the, so we can pick up your comments? Thank you, Sean.
As I said, I'm Sean Rucker, GM with Rogers Towing. And mine's more of a clarification. We had received the public comments from the May meeting, and one of the statements in there from the other towing company owners was that our current yard was in Corvallis, which is inaccurate. It's within the LPD rules and distance from, and it's actually an Albany address. Moving past that, we have acquired our security yard in Lebanon. We had some fencing work to do to it, and that's been completed. Now we're just waiting on our security approval before that yard opens.
Okay.
So if anybody's got any questions on that.
Thanks for clarification.
Yes, thank you for providing that clarification.
In closing, LPD has been exceptional to work with.
It's great to hear.
We work with many different agencies and they really do a good job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
So a big issue all over the state is RVs and the cost of those. What are you doing, or what can be done, to minimize the cost to the city as it relates to those?
Well, some of it is not mandated by us, right? It's mandated by the state, because it has to go through a hazmat process. I believe that the owner was going to address some of this, but I can for sure. So picking them up, like when we first got into this area in particular, I didn't realize that we were the only ones taking them, until we got feedback that the other places were, you know, this is before, I'm assuming the city council approved some funding for some of these RVs. So we were just taking them on the rotation and, you know, kind of footing the bill, to be honest. And we just kept doing it, because it was, you know, this is our community as well. I actually live here. We have two other drivers that live here, within Lebanon city limits, another one that lives in Sweet Home. So we're definitely here. So we were trying to do our part, and we did ask some questions, because we started to hear that the other companies weren't taking them. And we were pretty sure it was because of the cost. So we did ask the question, "It sounds like you guys must have approved some funding." But we do try to limit as much as we can, but these have to go through a hazmat process, and that is kind of a moving target, depending on what they find. And that's not mandated by us, that's a state deal. So I guess I don't know how we can alleviate all of that cost, or even control it, because of what's in these RVs, depending on age usually.
Okay, if there's no other questions, I just want to remind those in the audience that we do have the towing, vehicle towing on the agenda tonight, but it is only for discussion, and I know our chief is going to be providing just a report on that. So just wanted to let you know. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Sarah Anderson. Thank you for running the timer.
Hi. My name is Sarah Anderson, and I wish to speak in support of allowing our residents to place chairs or blankets ahead of our annual parade, with reasonable expectation that it happens no more than 72 hours before the event, to limit its impact on the community's use of sidewalks. So for many in our town, setting up chairs has become a tradition. So for many in our town, setting up chairs has become a tradition that reflects our excitement for the parade and an opportunity to be close to friends and family and watch our fellow community members be showcased and celebrated along the route. It is part of what makes the parade feel so special and so personal. And over the years, community members have raised concerns about fairness, accessibility, and sidewalk use, and I believe those concerns can be addressed without eliminating the tradition entirely. Establishing a clear codified rule, such as a 72-hour window before the event and placement criteria, would give everyone clarity, maintain public safety, and help avoid prolonged sidewalk blocking or threats of theft or vandalism. Specifically, my recommendation includes, but is not limited to, 72-hour window before the event, so Wednesday, equal time, about 11 o'clock, placement of chairs can happen as far back from the edge from the sidewalk as possible, grassy areas if they're available, no blocking entirety of walk path with blankets or tarps. I feel like this approach preserves the spirit of the community while also protecting a shared space, and I'm happy to take any questions if you guys have any.
Do we have any questions for Sarah?
No, I appreciate you reaching out to us, and I agree with you.
Yeah. You're welcome.
Sarah?
Sarah is in Ward One, just, sorry, Two.
She reached out to Dave and I. So I did get your email, I didn't respond, but I agree with your sentiment.
Thank you.
Sarah, what brought you forward to ask this?
I'm frequent in a lot of the community, you know, Facebook, Twitter, stuff like that, and I have a lot of family here. I've been here for several, well, I was born and raised here, so I've been here for a very long time. The discussion seems to be getting more and more intense around people placing chairs. It bothers some people to the point of threatening to remove property, to vandalize other people's property, things like that. And I think something like this would help avoid or alleviate some of that, if there's rules following it that everybody feels like they can abide by. So we're not allowing stuff to block public spaceways, but still allowing people to place their chairs. So.
I was surprised by how early some of that stuff came out, too.
Yeah.
I relate to you.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. If there are no other public comment cards in my hand at this time, there's, oh, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm Louis Rucker.
Oh, sorry. Louis Rucker, would you like to come forward? I wasn't sure if you were going to come together or separately. My apologies. So Louis Rucker with Rogers Towing.
He got his own things to say.
My apologies.
That's all right. My name is Louis Rucker. I'm the owner of Rogers Towing, and I'm going to follow up. Sean is my oldest son, lives here in Lebanon, just about three blocks away from here. And yeah, this comment at the May meeting was brought to our attention, which was an inaccurate comment, as he stated. We have, you know, we've been in business, Rogers Towing's been around since 1969, so it's not a, what I would refer to as a fly-by-night company. We do service several cities. We service Veneta, Springfield, Eugene, Corvallis, Lebanon, and all places in between. We now just a, we just recently got a contract with the city of Newport. And not the city of Newport, but contract in that zone over there that stretches from Walport to Lincoln City, which is a huge area of Highway 101. But anyway, our yard is, if anybody wants the address, it's 33933 Texas Street Southwest, Albany. It's well within the perimeters of the Lebanon tow rotation. And I saw a letter that the chief wrote, and he's exactly right. When we came to Lebanon, tow companies were refusing to take RVs because of the cost. And we stepped up and we took them. I recall one over here that I come up and worked on, I don't remember the street it was on, was an RV that had burned, so we had to bring in extra equipment to clean up the street and all the ashes and everything that's left from something burning almost completely to the ground, because nobody else would step up and do it. And now, my opinion is, people have learned, well, there's, now there's some funds to do it. Now all of a sudden, they can do it. Okay, that's, that's fine, that's great, but, you know, they refused to do it when there was no money. We did. We, you know, we support the communities that we're in. We were named a Business of the Year in 2022 in Veneta for our ongoing support in the things that we do in working with, you know, the local VFW and veterans, you know? We prioritize hiring veterans, and, you know, it's unheard of for a towing company to be voted Business of the Year, you know? It just doesn't happen hardly at all. We try to do, in the communities we're in, we try to do as much business locally as we can, you know? We do have, we do have accounts here, we have accounts in Albany, we have accounts in Salem where we purchase items. You know, we don't, you know, we don't make a central location at our, at our main shop or main office. We, we try to support the communities that we're in, and I believe that that's the way it should be, you know? And once again, I get the cleaning up of the RVs, it was very costly, it was very costly to us, but that is part of what we feel is our community involvement and things that really people should do. And I, you know, we do the same thing, you know, in Lane County, and it's, it's, it's tough to do, it's a tough pill to swallow. Part of what Sean was saying about the cost of it is anything 2006 and older has to be tested for asbestos, because they use asbestos in the gluing down of the linoleum and the carpeting. They use asbestos in the glue to seal the windows in, and if it tests positive for asbestos, that asbestos all has to be removed before it can be disposed of, you know, tore apart and disposed of properly. And also, you have to, you got to pump the holding tanks, you got to, you got to do away with the Freon and the refrigerators and the air conditioning units and all that stuff. And, you know, all that, once again, that all costs money. If it doesn't contain asbestos, it is much, much cheaper. But it's mandatory that they're tested. And, you know, we've been doing it for a long time, so, you know, even if companies, and I'll just put this out there, we have no problem showing you where our RVs go and what is done, because it is mandated, you know, by state law. But I'll throw this out there, is anybody can tow an RV. It's what's done with it after they tow it away. Is it being disposed of properly? Or, you know, what's happening to it? I mean, they can't just take it out back somewhere and take an excavator to it and start tearing it apart with, without all the, without all the testing and remediation that needs to be done to these. That's, it's a bad deal if they do. And I'm not saying anybody, you know, I'm not saying anybody does, but it might behoove the city to make sure that they are going to licensed facilities and being tested and disposed of properly.
That's what I was going to ask. Do you have your own dismantling license, or do you use a dismantler?
No, you have to have a dismantling license, and you also have to, you have to be a licensed abatement contractor.
But you contract, you contract with somebody for that?
Yes, we contract with somebody for that because, number one, it, the facility where that has to take place is very limited on its zoning, you know, very specific on its zoning. And then being a licensed asbestos abatement company, there's just, there's so many different rules, it's just, there's a couple of companies that do it, you know, and it's, it's just easier because that's what they specialize in. And, you know, and it's, it's not free. The other thing, you were on the discussion of water earlier. Last winter, I don't, some of you may have heard of this, we were involved in a recovery of a semi that made a wrong turn up a logging road and rolled over, rolled over in the canyon above Green Peter and had on a load of slug and snail killer. And we were successful in recovering that semi with not, without anything being spilled, with no injuries. It was a very, very dangerous situation because it was such a steep, steep canyon. And this load was hanging over the drinking water of Sweet Home. Now, I don't know if you guys share the same drinking water from Green Peter or not, but anyway, I have some copies here. If anybody's interested, I can just leave a pile with you. This was a thank you letter from the Forest Service on the job that we did and got the recovery all done without spilling anything into the drinking water and getting the truck and trailer out of there. And, yeah, it was, it was a very, very, very dangerous recovery. We got it done without anybody being hurt or anything. And so I was pretty proud and pretty happy about that because I was up there the whole week, and it was, yeah, it was pretty, pretty hair-raising. But anyway.
Sir, I hate to do this, but we, we didn't get this thing working in time, but you are past your time.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And it's okay. We also didn't have the timer piece going, but I want to make sure, did council have any questions for Mr. Rucker? If not, I just want to thank you for being here tonight. And then also, my understanding is Rogers Towing is on the rotation.
Yes, we are.
List.
There were just some questions about us being on it, I guess.
Yes, okay.
And so we wanted to address that. And here's something also from the Tangent Fire Department, where we work with them. We, I have thank you letters from Lynn Benton Community College. We work with them in donating vehicles for them to practice their repairs on and stuff. So, yeah, just wanted to kind of present our side of it and let you know who we are, and I appreciate the time.
Louis, thank you for the service you provide.
Pass this down. Thank you for bearing with us through public comment without the little flashing light situation that we usually have. Okay, with that, we will end our public comments. So just a reminder, there's another one at the end of the meeting if you choose to do so, and we will move into public hearings. So first up is ordinance bill 2025-04. So we're going to go ahead and open the public hearing regarding this annexation, a bill for an ordinance annexing and zoning property following consent filed with Lebanon, with the city council by landowners near 31666 Southwest Fifth Street. So the public hearing regarding this annexation is now open at 6:29 PM. The city attorney will read the hearing procedures now.
Thank you, Madam President. Tonight's hearing will be pursuant to the quasi judicial procedure set out in ORS 197.797. At the start of each hearing, council members will be asked to disclose any ex parte communications conflict of interest or bias. The applicable substantive criteria for the hearing will be addressed in the staff report to council. Testimony may be in oral or written form, but must be directed towards the criteria outlined in the staff report that comprehends a plan or the city's land use regulations. Any issue raised must be accompanied by statements and evidence sufficient enough to allow the council and party members an opportunity to respond. Please note the failure to raise an issue, including constitutional issues, by the close of the hearing will prevent any appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals. With that, you may proceed.
Okay. Do any counselors wish to declare ex parte contact, conflict, or bias? Is there anyone in the audience that objects to the notice that was sent in this case or to the jurisdiction of this body to hear and consider the case? Seeing none, will the community development director present the staff report?
Yes, Madam President.
All night.
Yep. So before you tonight is a proposed annexation of a property totaling 4.82 acres on the west side of South Fifth Street, south of Joy Street. And the subject property is 31666 Southwest Fifth Street. The property is located within the urban growth boundary. It is contiguous to city boundary lines on the west and east side, and it is able to be serviced by city utilities that are located in South Fifth Street. So it is eligible for annexation. The property is designated for zoning as residential mixed density upon annexation, and the property owners are accepting the zoning upon annexation. The Planning Commission conducted a public hearing on May 21st and found that the application complied with the decision criteria contained in the Development Code and unanimously recommended that the city council approve the annexation. And Exhibit B of the staff report is, it contains all the findings and appropriate criteria for the approval of the annexation, but generally speaking, it's contiguous to city boundaries, able to be serviced by utilities, and they're accepting of these initial zoning, so it meets your criteria. So the recommendation is to approve the annexation. That concludes my report. You can answer any questions.
Thank you. Does council have any questions for Community Development Director Hart? Seeing none? Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of this annexation? I understand the applicants are here.
I'll speak just very quickly.
Okay, can you provide your name, too, when you sit down, sir?
My name is Dan Watson, K and D Engineering. I completely agree with the staff report that was put together. I just want to make one clarification. All the records I have list this planning case number as A-25-02, and I believe
Whatever I said.
Someone said 04 at the start.
Well, you know, it's been a long day already.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone here that would like to speak in opposition? Seeing none? The public hearing is hereby closed at 6:33 PM. All further discussion will be limited to council and staff at this time. Any discussion on this? If not, will the city attorney please read the title of the ordinance?
Ordinance Bill Number 2025-04, Ordinance 3035, a bill for an ordinance annexing and zoning property following consent filed with the city council by landowners in said area pursuant to ORS 222.120 and ORS 222.170 filed A-25-02, Stockard &amp; Brown, 31666 Southwest Fifth Street.
Is there a motion?
Move this through.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. Thank you. We're going to be doing a lot of these public hearings tonight. Thank you, Mayor, for not being in town tonight. Thanks, really appreciate it. I hope he hears that.
We're going to get really good at it.
Next up, we have a public hearing regarding the Development Code updates, which is now open at 6:34 PM. The city attorney will read the hearing procedures.
The hearing procedures in this case are not required.
Oh, wonderful. Do, this is for, so do any, we don't have any ex parte contact then for this one? This is housing authority?
Correct. This isn't quasi judicial because it doesn't relate to a smaller, a small, specific piece of property or a local piece of property, so.
Wonderful.
Just a public hearing.
Will the community development director please present the staff report?
Yes, ma'am. Madam President, I'm going to keep doing it as much as I can.
You missed a chance there.
This is my last time. So thank you all again. So before you tonight is an item that has been before you multiple times, and this is the last time. It is about a year and a half in the making. This is the Development Code amendment to implement items associated with the housing production strategy. So the housing production strategy was the policy document that the council adopted that identified how we are to proceed in implementing new housing to promote housing production in our city. So the policy has been set to identify how we are moving forward. The Development Code amendment before you tonight is how we intend to implement that policy. So the question before you is whether or not we got it right in how we are implementing the already established policy. And so the process that we have been going for over the last year has been the production of that Development Code proposal. We have before you tonight Darcy with MIG, who you all have seen many times before already. She is going to do a very quick
before already. Um, she is going to do a very quick overview of the code that we have been working through because this is not new. Um, it has gone through many, um, iterations before the council and the planning commission. Um, and so she's going to walk us through a very quick presentation to just do a final overview and answer any final questions as part of the public hearing. So I am going to turn it over to Darcy for one final presentation.
Good evening. See if I can make my, uh, my technology work this evening. I also am in a similar boat. Uh, I'm, I'm being left with this, uh, this happy duty from my colleague Brandon Crawford, who can't be with you tonight. So I'm going to go ahead and, there we go. Fantastic. Good evening. Darcy Rzynski, I'm a project manager and principal at MIG. And along with Brandon Crawford, my colleague, uh, we have been assisting the city with implementing, adopting housing strategies. Um, that is through, uh, regulatory changes, um, that if adopted would apply to future, uh, housing development in your community. So, uh, this is kind of a process overview. Uh, we've been working closely with staff and the appointed advisory committee, um, on developing community appropriate code changes. We've met four times with the advisory committee, starting, uh, first meeting last summer. Um, we've also been able to share findings and recommendations with council and planning commission at three briefings. Um, the last one was just recently, um, in March. So, uh, the main objective of this project was to address the city's top priorities, um, as detailed in the housing production strategy, the HPS. Uh, we were able to accomplish all those top actions early in the project. So that left us some time to tackle the rest of the HPS recommendations, um, as well as look at and suggest some improvements to additional housing related sections. But that was good. It was a very, um, fast project, but we got a lot packed into it. Um, the project resulted in new standards and allowances for small lots, single unit dwellings, uh, revisions to cottage cluster requirements to improve, um, improve the, the chances that the, um, uh, possibility that you may see that type of housing in Lebanon, uh, recommended removal of ineffectual infill design standards that really were confusing and, and not being used, and clarifying the approval process and regulatory language, uh, under the city's manufactured, uh, dwelling park standards. The city also has, uh, some new allowances for, uh, tiny home on wheels. The proposed code language would allow this type of structure, this type of housing in cottage clusters, uh, in manufactured, uh, dwelling parks. It would also allow this type of housing to be used as accessory dwelling unit to a primary dwelling or a, a primary house on a lot. The project also updated affordable housing bonuses. Um, again, you had those, but the revised language documents how, uh, housing development proposal could be, um, eligible for increased density, uh, increased height, um, or potentially a reduction in off-street parking, uh, based on the number of affordable units that were proposed. So that is a very quick overview. As instructed, very quick, Kelly, of the types of changes, uh, that are being proposed in your packet. Um, the members of the advisory committee, they wrapped up their work in March and they provided us some assurances that this, at their last meeting, that the proposed, uh, code language, the proposed changes were appropriate for Lebanon and would, you know, help advance the city's housing objectives. So the planning commission, uh, also agreed with that. And at the first hearing, they recommended that the code changes be adopted. So with that, uh, I'm here to help Kelly answer any questions, uh, as best as I can. Um, I want to give thanks to everyone who participated in the project. It was a very good project for us. Brandon and I really enjoyed working with all of you and particularly Kelly, who has been, uh, a really good project manager and advocate for the city through this process. I also would be remiss if I did not mention that, uh, this project, uh, came to you in part through a grant from, uh, the Department of Land Conservation and Development. Uh, so that agency supported this project as well as your, uh, DLCD representative, um, Patrick Wingard gave us a good review and advice through the project. With that, thank you very much, and I'll end my little show.
And then I'll add one little bit. As you saw on the, the second to last slide, um, as part of the planning commission's submittal, there was one written comment, uh, that was provided, and it was included in your packet as well. Um, the planning commission did review that written comment, and the, the written comment largely consisted of stylistic changes to the code. Um, there wasn't any proposed substantive changes. Um, and the planning commission determined that, uh, they did not choose to, to, um, recommend any changes to the code, uh, based off of that written comment and adopt the code as, uh, presented, um, in the packet and before you tonight. So, um, with that, Darcy and I are both available for any questions.
Counsel, do we have questions for Darcy or Director Hart?
Not at this time.
Not at this time. Okay.
I just have a short statement I wanted to read regarding this, if it's the time to do it.
This is the time.
Regarding changes to the building and municipal codes here in Lebanon, I am opposed to any changes to the code. I keep hearing we must do this to solve the housing crisis. I would like to think that we get to determine our own destiny and our own crisis. I recognize and respect the efforts and planning our predecessors have had in regards to long-range plans for Lebanon. I do recognize the efforts of those that want to change it. However, they don't live here, we do. Becoming a city of renters instead of homeowners was not the vision of our city fathers, but instead has become the vision of developers and investors. It is like making a family of fox, the security team for the chicken coop. As the second largest city in Lynn County, we have grown substantially in the last 10 years, and it does not seem to be slowing down. We are steadily building apartments, fewer houses, and multi-unit complexes. Building more and dense housing have not solved our issues. We should encourage building homes for ownership. It is a way to stabilize and make our city safer and happier, but we should do it responsibly. I represent the city, the citizens of Lebanon first, and everyone else comes after that. I believe the proposed changes do not benefit our city, but in fact do the opposite. Condensed housing, less parking, fewer green spaces, temporary and tiny homes and yards, and density housing will create more problems than it solves. If approved, these changes, I believe, will only increase crime and hinder police and fire protection and medical personnel responses, crowd our schools, and worsen traffic conditions. I do not believe for a second it will make housing more affordable or more available for the lower income or solve any homelessness issues. We've all heard the phrase, build it and they will come. We can see with our own eyes that this is happening. I always ask myself when deciding, what would the citizens and voters say or want? If they had the chance to vote on this, I believe they would say no to more three-story apartments, less parking, crowded housing, less green spaces, traffic congestion, crowded schools, crime, and fewer medical services. I cannot help but stick up for and represent the people that live here and vote here, and I will continue to do so. After all that is what we were elected to do. Again, we should determine our own destiny for our children and ourselves. David McLean Ward two.
Thank you, Counselor McLean, for your statement. Is there any other, uh, questions for counsel or any other statements from counsel before we proceed with the public hearing? Okay.
I'm going to make a quick statement if you don't mind.
Sure.
I, I, I agree with Mr. My fellow councilman's opinion on that and feeling for that. I don't know how to vote against it with what's coming down the pike at us, though. I think, I think that the decision to, to, to make those decisions is, the time has passed. I think this is mandated upon us to make these actions in some way, or we're going to run afoul of state legislation. I don't like it any more than you do.
Thank you, Counselor Workman. Any other comments from counsel? Okay, if not, uh, again, we are still actually in a public hearing. So, uh, thank you, Darcy, for your short presentation, and thank you, Director Hart, for that as well. Uh, is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak in favor of this, uh, ordinance amending the city development code regarding implementing new housing opportunities? It just keeps going, sorry. Seeing none. Anyone who speak in opposition? Okay. The public hearing is hereby closed at 6:47 PM, and all further discussion will be limited to council and staff at this time. I believe, um, I think most of council, if there's any other last-minute, um, pieces that you would like to, to speak your piece, this is that time. If not, will the city attorney please read the title of the ordinance?
Thank you, Madam President, and Madam Director Hart. Ordinance bill number 2025 dash 05, ordinance 3036, a bill for an ordinance amending the city of Lebanon development code regarding implementing new housing opportunities.
Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second, is there a second?
I second.
Thank you, Counselor Workman. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed?
May I suggest a roll call?
Can we, I would appreciate a roll call vote for this. Uh, Julie, please?
Counselor Mann?
Aye.
Counselor Workman?
Aye.
Counselor McLean?
Nay.
Counselor Conti?
Oh, you guys are mean. Uh, as the, um, tie-breaking vote tonight, I vote yes. And I vote yes as, um, while I don't agree with every single thing actually in the housing production strategy that we have tonight, um, I will say, I also feel that I represent Lebanon and as a millennial and probably the only, and the only millennial on this, uh, body, um, there's a generation of us that face different, um, issues than some of our, uh, fathers and grandfathers do. And I believe this is an entry point for a lot of folks in the Lebanon area. And it might not be, um, what my parents had or my grandparents had, but, um, for some of those that are younger than myself even, this is that entry point. And I believe it's important for us to, to provide those opportunities. So with that, motion passes and we move on. Okay, next up, uh, another public hearing. We're in for so many tonight. Resolution number six for 2025, a resolution authorizing a supplemental budget for the city of Lebanon. Again, it's a public hearing. So the public hearing regarding the supplemental budget for the city of Lebanon is now open at 6:49 PM. Will the finance director please present the staff report, virtually, from the woods?
Thank you, Madam President. Um, I apologize, counsel, for not being there with you today. Um, certainly in this moment, sharing is not caring. So, uh, I'm doing all of this remotely, although you have a lot to hear from me tonight. Um, before you is a resolution to, uh, to pass a supplemental budget, increasing expenditure authority in two of our funds for different purposes. The first adjustment is over in our general fund. Uh, we had a project that was, uh, moved forward that, uh, we did not intend on completing, at least when we were building the budget initially. Um, but, uh, Build Lebanon Trails was able to secure funding for a portion of trail out at Gil's Landing, uh, that we were able to move forward with and therefore need the adjustment. We received, uh, the donated funds from BLT this, this fiscal year. Um, and this resolution then just seeks to adjust that budget so that the expenditure is, uh, authorized, um, before the end of the fiscal year. The second adjustment, uh, is in our storm drainage fund. We did not, we were unable to complete some, uh, projects in the 2024 fiscal year, and as a result, there was funds left over, uh, in the ending fund balance that rolled into the current year, um, that needs to be budgeted so that we are authorized to complete those overall projects. Because both of these exceed the 10% of the initial allowable expenditures in the fund, it requires a public hearing and a public notice, which was completed. Uh, the, the public notice went out in the Democrat Herald. Um, and that's why we have this public hearing today for resolution 2025 dash 06.
Okay. Thank you, Brandon. Does counsel have any questions of staff? Seeing none. Uh, is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of this resolution? Anyone who would like to speak in opposition of this motion, resolution, excuse me? If not, the public hearing is closed at 6:52 PM. All further discussion will be limited to council at this time. Is there any questions again of Director Nish or council discussion on this item? Seeing none. Will the city attorney please read the title of the resolution?
Resolution number six for 2025, a resolution authorizing a supplemental budget for the city of Lebanon.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Do we have a second? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Okay, another public hearing. Surprise. Uh, resolution number seven, 2025, a resolution certifying its eligibility in declaring the city of Lebanon's election to receive state revenues. We will open the public hearing again at 6:53 PM. Will the finance director please present the staff report? You're back.
I am. Um, this is the most wonderful time of the year. Most people find that to be in December. However, um, budget season is my favorite. So with that, we have several resolutions, uh, that launch us into our new fiscal year that begins July 1. This is the first of many of them. Uh, we are required by state law to hold a public hearing on the uses of state revenue sharing, money we receive from the state of Oregon for various purposes. Uh, specifically, we receive money, uh, from cigarette taxes, marijuana taxes, um, just a generalized state revenue sharing line. Uh, and then also what is traditionally been our largest contributor in our budget, or at least of the state revenue, the liquor taxes. For the 2025, 2026 fiscal year, we have budgeted revenue of $552,320, and it will be used as non-dated, non-dedicated revenue in the general fund. Traditionally, the city has, has said that this revenue is used to support police operations, as a lot of these require police intervention occasionally at times, um, and some planning use for, um, uh, making sure that, you know, they're following the right rules as far as placement, um, and following all state guidelines. So, uh, that is, that resolution is before you. We have to certify that we provide certain services. Um, the state chaired revenue report is in your packet, along with this resolution, for consideration.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for Director Nish? Seeing none. Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor or opposition in the roll-in one of this, uh, of this resolution?
I have a question.
Please come, can you?
Do I understand this correct? This is, these are funds that will go into the general fund? Is that correct?
The question, Director Nish, are these funds that go into the general fund?
Yes, they are.
I believe they do. Yes, because they go.
They can be used for anything that falls within the general fund?
Uh, sir, if, I'm going to take the last question. If you have further questions, please come forward, though. Okay. Um, hold on, Brandon. Thank you. Can you state your name for the record?
Yeah, my name is Steve Smith.
Thank you.
I just wanted to understand, so this is part of the general fund and it's to be used for that allocation. Can any of that money be used to lower the budget or lower the, the gap that we have in the city budget?
So
Brandon, can you hear that question? Okay.
Yeah. So these revenues do go into the general fund, and that is part of, uh, you know, at least where the city has been experiencing its, its budget crunches. Um, this $500,000 is, is annual, has annually been part of our budget and part of the consideration of our, in our overall expenditures. Um, so this is not additional revenue coming in that, that was not anticipated. It is pre-planned and, and traditional revenue, um, that unfortunately will not buy down any of our existing, uh, budget crunches.
But at this point, it's not earmarked for anything?
It, it is, no. It, like most of our general fund revenues, it just goes into the general fund. It, no, like most of our general fund revenues, it just goes into the general fund to be used for general fund purposes. That includes similar to property taxes, franchise fees, and the like.
Brandon, can you remind me what percentage of the general fund budget goes to the police department?
It's just north of, it's about 72% of our general fund is police expenditures.
Thank you.
And I support that, too. I believe the police need to be, have a presence in here and be supported as well. So thank you for your time and information.
Thank you for your questions. Okay, is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor or opposition to this? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed at 6:57 PM. All further discussion will be limited to council at this time. Any discussion or questions? Seeing none, will the city attorney please read the title of the resolution?
Resolution Number 7 for 2025, a resolution certifying its eligibility in declaring the City of Lebanon's election to receive state revenues.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
One at a time.
Move to approve.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. Thank you. Next up, similar one. Resolution Number 8, 2025, a resolution certifying the city complies with sections of ORS 475-C related to marijuana sales inside city limits. The public hearing regarding marijuana sales inside the City of Lebanon is now open at 6:57 PM. Will the Finance Director please present the report again?
I shall.
Thank you.
Before the council is a resolution similar to that of our state shared revenues, but this is a secondary resolution that requires verification that the city allows for sales of marijuana within city limits. The purpose of this, then, ensures that we continue to receive the state portion of the marijuana tax funds, albeit that that portion has declined significantly in prior years. We do still get about 20, just under $30,000 a year from the state for marijuana taxes. This does go into the general fund, generally used to support police operations and to provide things like Narcan, intervention when necessary, and is a regular part of our budget.
Thank you. Does anyone have questions for Brandon?
On both of these, and kind of rolling back here a little bit, what these really are is us saying that we have to tell people, this is what we're doing. We're going to accept the money. We're going to follow the right steps. We can't ask for more.
Right.
And we'd be foolish to ask for less.
Correct, yeah.
Does that make sense?
Yep.
Okay, I just want to clarify that.
And I would certainly add that, you know, these revenues, the city could certainly reject the state shared revenues, could say that we don't certify that we provide certain services, or that we don't wish to receive the revenue. Certainly, that would compound an existing issue that we have chosen to address in the past, as far as our budget considerations. And beyond kind of the certification that we provide certain services, there's no other strings attached related to the state revenues. So, you know, it is certainly my recommendation that the council do certify receipt of these funds for future use.
Thanks for the clarification, Brandon.
Thank you. Any other questions for Brandon? Seeing none, is there anyone who would like to speak in favor or opposition of this resolution? Seeing none, the public hearing is hereby closed at 7 o'clock. All further discussion will be limited to council and staff. Seeing no council discussion, will the city attorney please read the title of the ordinance?
Resolution Number 8 for 2025, a resolution certifying the city complies with sections of ORS 475-C related to marijuana sales inside the city limits.
Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second, and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Another one. Resolution Number 9, 2025, a resolution adopting the city's budget and making appropriations for fiscal year 2526. The public hearing regarding the City of Lebanon's budget for fiscal year 2526 is now open at 7:01 PM. Will the Finance Director please present his report?
Thank you, Madam President. City council, this is the biggest resolution of the evening, and in my opinion, the most important, as without an adopted budget, the city has no authority under state law to spend money in the following fiscal year. So before you is that resolution outlining what the Budget Committee has reviewed and approved. So in the middle of April, the Budget Committee received the Budget Officer, the city manager's proposed budget and budget message, and then deliberated over a meeting on May 6 regarding the specific expenditures within that budget, and also recommended specific taxes for both our permanent rate and bond revenue to cover the general obligation bond, or the debt service for the Justice Center and the library. Before you is a resolution to adopt a total expenditure budget of $66,738,962. We did want to highlight that that budget is $15,970, almost $16,000 higher than the prior year. That is not very much. We do, I can say that that does not include things like our ending fund balances, or any unappropriated reserves that we have set aside for future projects, but as far as actual expenditures are concerned, all we have added in this current, for this coming fiscal year, is $16,000. So, you know, that certainly lends to, we are doing the most that we can with the dollars that we have, and also could indicate that we are going through some drying times and will have some considerations to make in the future if we're unable to grow expenditures as the organization grows. Otherwise, there are two resolutions here. The Resolution 2025-09, which adopts our annual fiscal year budget, and then 2025-10, which levies taxes. Specifically, in 2025-10, there are multiple components to that tax levying, so you have your permanent rate, which we discussed, and the general obligation bond debt. And then we have two items related to delinquent sewer and storm drainage charges. This is past due sewer and storm drainage bills, in which traditionally with water accounts, we are able to do lockoffs for non-payments. We are unable to do that, obviously, with sewer and storm drainage lots. And so we do send those to the county once a year to try to receive those funds through property taxes. So all of those components are included in the resolution. I do want to make a note, as I'm sitting here walking through this, that there is in Section 1 of that resolution, it does say an amount of $2,100,000 for voter-approved debt service. However, it looks like the table down below, the general obligation bond debt, remained at the 1.78 million from the prior year. So that table just needs to be adjusted a smidge, but the language is in the section.
We need to amend that before, do we need to amend that before we pass that, then? Or does that need to be in an amendment?
I might refer to Trey on that one.
I think if it's clear, and if it's just a table that's different than what you've presented in the report itself, I think it's fine.
Thank you. Okay, do we have any questions for Brandon? Seeing none, is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of this resolution or opposition? Seeing none, the public hearing is now closed at 7:05 PM. All further discussion will be limited to council and staff at this time. Any questions, again, or any discussion on our budget? This has gone through quite, as Brandon mentioned, we go through quite the process to get this done involving budget committee members from the public as well, and culminates into Brandon's favorite time of the year, passing budgets.
Not to question that a little bit.
Like Christmas, apparently. Okay, seeing no council discussion, will the city attorney please read the title of the resolution?
Resolution Number 9 for 2025, a resolution adopting the City of Lebanon's budget and making appropriations for fiscal year 2025-2026.
Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second, and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Yet another one. Resolution Number 10, which Brandon alluded to earlier, a resolution levying taxes for the City of Lebanon's budget for fiscal year 2526. Public hearing regarding levying taxes of the city's budget for FY 2526 is now open at 7:06 PM. Will Director Nish please present the staff report?
We kind of already gave it as we combined the memos, because really, they are, you know, one in the same, but we do break it up for, you know, transparency purposes so that everybody sees exactly what's happening. This piece just certifies or levies the appropriate taxes so that we receive our property taxes in the general fund as established and limited by measures 5 and 50, and allocated under Section 11B, Article 11 of the Oregon Constitution.
Can you remind, the recommended taxes are, is it 5.1364 per thousand?
64, yep.
Okay.
And then $2,100,000 for the general obligation bonds.
Okay, thank you. Does council have any questions for Brandon? Seeing none, is there anyone who would like to speak in favor or opposition of this resolution? Seeing none, the public hearing is now closed at 7:07 PM. All further discussion will be limited to council at this time. Counselors?
We've ruled this one.
I think so, too. Will the city attorney please read the title of the resolution?
Resolution Number 10 for 2025, a resolution levying taxes for the City of Lebanon budget for fiscal year 2025-2026.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
It's been, it's been seconded, and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We have two more of these, just so everybody's on the same page. We will now adjourn as the City of Lebanon Budget Committee and reconvene as the Urban Renewal Agency Budget Committee, tackling Resolution Number 11 for 2025, a resolution adopting the Lebanon Urban Renewal Agency's budget and making appropriations for FY 2526. The public hearing on the Lebanon Urban Renewal Agency budget and making appropriations for FY 2526 is now open at 7:08 PM. Director Nish, is there a report to present?
There is.
Thank you.
So, similar to the city budget, we, you are now wearing the hats of the Urban Renewal Agency. The Urban Renewal Agency budget follows the same process that we follow for the city budget. We have our proposed budget delivered to the Urban Renewal Agency Budget Committee that does contain the seven board members, you all, and seven equal members of the public. The Urban Renewal Agency Budget Committee did approve a total budget of $8,469,526, which included all requirements, including ending fund balances and contingencies. Before you is a resolution to adopt a total expenditure budget of $7,366,366,132, in order to continue our plans for the different urban renewal districts for the coming fiscal year.
Does council have any questions for Brandon? Seeing none, anyone who would like to speak in favor or opposed to this resolution? Seeing none, the public hearing is now closed at 7:09 PM. All further discussion limited to council at this time. Seeing no council discussion, will the city attorney please read the title of the resolution?
Resolution Number 10, or excuse me, Resolution Number 11 for 2025, a resolution adopting the Lebanon Urban Renewal Agency's budget and making appropriations for fiscal year 2025-2026.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
It's been moved in seconded, and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Next up, Resolution Number 12, 2025, a resolution levying taxes for the Lebanon Urban Renewal Agency budget for FY 2526. The public hearing levying taxes for Lebanon Urban Renewal budget is now open at 7:10 PM. Director Nish, please present your report.
This is the last of the public hearings, and I'm sure you are all very excited for that.
I'm so excited about that.
Before you is, similar to the city budget, the authorization to levy taxes for the Lebanon Urban Renewal Agency. You can see in Sections 2, 3, 4, and 5 that at this point, we are proposing that we raise 100% of the allowable taxable value within those urban renewal districts, specifically Section 1. For the Northwest Lebanon Urban Renewal District, we are planning on under-leveying the total amount. That has been traditionally what the city, what the board has done over the last several years, as that fund has finished most of its projects, and at this point, is just working on paying off debt service. If you'll remember, there is a plan in this current budget year, for the next two years, to accelerate debt service payments, and so we are asking for the increment property value of $141,651,029, which is significantly higher than it has been in the past, especially over the last year. But that still leaves a significant chunk of property value that is not being taxed and is therefore going out to the taxing districts within that district. So we are proposing that you adopt this resolution to levy taxes for the year.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Brandon? Seeing none, is there anyone who would like to speak in favor or opposition to this resolution? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed at 7:12 PM. All further discussion limited to council. Seeing none, will the city attorney please read the title of the resolution?
Resolution Number 12 for 2025, a resolution levying taxes for the Lebanon Urban Renewal Agency's budget for fiscal year 2025-2026.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Motion approved.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. At this time, we will adjourn as the Urban Renewal Agency Budget Committee and reconvene as the City of Lebanon Budget Committee. We're not done yet. Next up in regular session, Number 13, 2025, a resolution authorizing a transfer of appropriations for the City of Lebanon budget, 2425 budget, excuse me. Brandon, will you please present the report?
Thank you, Madam President. This is the last of the resolutions that I have on the docket before you. It is the end of the fiscal year for the 2025 fiscal year. We are working on cleaning up some items before we get to the end. Our fiscal year ends June 30. At this point, what is before you is a resolution to reappropriate funding that was already authorized, and what we are requesting is to move it from its various lines to help support programs that have needed it throughout the year, or just have expenditures that we're planning on running over, what they were initially authorized to spend. So the first of those adjustments is over in the general fund. We have procured a vehicle for essentially city hall use, and so we need some, we need an adjustment in our vehicle line in the non-departmental part of the general fund. Our insurance was a little more pricey than we had planned for the fiscal year, so we need an additional $75,000 to help cover the insurance expenditures we incurred for the year. Utility costs have been significant over the course of the year, specifically in our wastewater, at our wastewater treatment plant, as they kind of go through and work on various components of the plant that have struggled to function in the manner that they initially were anticipated to do so. And then, lastly, an adjustment in the loan interest line, as we paid off a loan the general fund was working on paying. We paid that off this year early, and we had a planned loan interest of about $33,000, came in a little bit higher by the time everything was all settled out, so we're requesting an additional $8,800. All of that is expected to be covered by contingency, so we are asking to reduce the contingency budget. That is, the purpose of the contingency is to cover these kind of unanticipated events and redistribute those to those lines that you see within that resolution. In the Admin Internal Service Fund, salary costs, whether for, due to either contract changes or cashouts amongst the fund, have resulted in some planned over expenditures for the human services, their human resources department and the finance department. So we are requesting that, again, the contingency kind of cover those two areas. You'll see that the contingency budget in the Admin Internal Service Fund was $82,100 more than capable of covering. thousand, one hundred dollars, more than capable of covering these over expenditures. The Water Fund, again, similar, a lot of this due to to contract changes for the year, and then certainly, you know, to keep the plant operational, the city does have standby and callback time in order to ensure that we can just continue to deliver clean drinking water to the community. We had more in those expenditures than we had planned and need to cover those exceeding costs. And then on the engineering side, specifically just contract changes has resulted in the need for additional salary funds. So, once again, contingency to cover those. In the Motel Tax Fund, we had city grants that when the budget was was set, yours truly did not plan for some of our downtown building restoration program grants to roll into the into the next fiscal year. We fixed that for two thousand twenty-six, but for two thousand twenty-five, I need to move some money out of the capital line, that improvements line there, fifty thousand dollars, to help cover the the overages in that for that program. Lastly, in the Building Fund, this is just due to cashouts and to contract changes. We just need a little bit to cover the Development Services Group to ensure that they won't exceed their expenditure authority for the fiscal year, again, to be covered by contingency. That's everything. I can certainly answer any questions the council may have.
Thank you for walking us through that. Does anyone have any questions for Brandon? And real briefly, I think I mentioned that we were reconvening as the City of Lebanon Budget Committee. We are actually as the Lebanon City Council right now, so my apologies for that. No questions for Brandon, seeing none. Will the city attorney please read the title of the resolution?
Resolution number thirteen for two thousand twenty-five, a resolution authorizing a transfer of appropriations for the City of Lebanon, two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five budget.
Thank you, is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Been moved in second and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Next up, and thank you, Director Nish.
Thanks, Brandon.
Next up on the agenda is for discussion is the staff report from Chief Stevenson regarding vehicle towing.
Sure you don't want to break and go into some kind of gavel thing going on?
I do not want to hit this gavel anymore, except for to adjourn tonight if possible.
Thank you. Madam President and council members, what I have before you tonight is a discussion and kind of a brief, not even a brief, but it is a pretty lengthy overview in regards to the Lebanon police tow policy when it comes to nonpreference toes. As kind of stated earlier within the the public comments, Rogers Towing came into the rotation probably around twenty twenty-ish, and that was primarily in regards to when we were having a significant increase in abandoned R Vs, which included trailers and boats and and all other kinds of things. And I can't sit here and say that they, other tow companies that we had at the time were actually refusing, but the simple fact was they could not come out upon the times that we were calling them. So Rogers came into play, and I'm not even exactly sure how, but it was a it was a blessing when when they did reach out and contacted us and said, you know, we can take care of those for you. So looking within our internal policy, which clearly outlines they have to be within a certain mile radius of Lebanon, they matched that and met that, and that's how they became on the list of of nonpreference toes. Currently, we have four tow companies that are on that list. That's Lebanon Towing, A A Towing, Arrow Star Towing, and now Rogers Towing. I know there's another tow company that is also coming or talking about getting a lot here in town. They haven't yet done so, and they're outside of the fifty miles radius, so we haven't put them on the tow rotation yet. But the purpose and scope of having a rotational tow is, one, to allow tow companies an equal share at the impounds that we do do, and also gives us additional resources that many times we come upon crashes that involve multiple vehicles, and our number one priority is to get those vehicles out of the roadway to get traffic flowing again. To note, I think it was one hundred and ninety-six toes that we did, nonpreference toes, within last year. Every single one of those was a nonpreference tow. And I will say each tow company that we do have on our list, I'm extremely thankful for. They're excellent when we call, they come out. If they can't come out within a timely manner, we do move on to the next person on the rotation, and that definitely helps us when we're out there trying to, again, open up the roadways and and clear them, as well as address the abandoned vehicle issue and the R Vs. I will say, within the last, I think it was a year, year and a half or so, A A Towing and now Arrow Star Towing has agreed to start impounding or tow the the trailers and R Vs. That that actually has slowed down quite a bit, I will say, but there was a there was a time, and again, reference earlier conversation, that we had nobody to impound these things, and some of them were left in the dead center of the street, and we couldn't get anyone to come out. It actually got to a point where officers were using their personal vehicles just to get them off the roadway so traffic flow can go. The rotation that we do have has been, probably in the twenty-eight years that I've been here at the police department, we've had this rotation. We haven't had any issues nor complaints that have come in to our facility regarding these toes and tow companies. And yes, if I have any questions out of you guys, I'm here to answer them.
Thing I've asked is, for rotation means exactly what it sounds like, right?
It's exactly what it sounds like.
Your turn next, your turn next.
Yeah, and it's only man, it's only for nonpreference tow. So some, obviously, if we're at a traffic crash, and that's the only time really that or or if a vehicle is broken down, if someone has a preference, we're more than happy to to utilize that. So it's when someone doesn't have a preference and we have to get that vehicle gone that we utilize the 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 nonpreference tow list rotational, so.
Frank, Frank.
But again, like I said, I am, I'm very thankful for the tow companies. They do have a very difficult job, some pretty gruesome scenes that they have to come to, sometimes two, three o'clock in the morning, and sometimes the vehicle's off the embankment, and these guys do an outstanding job of responding, getting there and getting getting the vehicle where it needs to go.
Thank you. No more questions for on this topic, it doesn't look like? All right. Thanks again for the report. I appreciate it. I know we had several questions when this came up before, and I just thought a nice wrapped up staff report would be a way to go, and I appreciate the time that you spent on this.
Yeah, no problem. Yeah, and I actually included our internal policy. It kind of mirrors what the what the memorandum states as well, so.
Okay, thank you. All right, next up, department reports. City Manager Whitlatch.
Thank you, Madam President and City Council. I won't get into too much of this stuff unless you guys have questions tonight. I will cover a few things. Just a reminder, upcoming work sessions, kind of reiterate that a little bit, we'll get those out. The next one will be July. Probably going to have to do a couple of months where we do two work sessions, or if we can figure out another way to to blend them into one evening, we'll do that as well. Let us give some time to think about that. City buildings are closed next week in observation at Juneteenth, that's June nineteenth. They will be closed. Some kudos, Angela Silsby, our Human Resources Director, she's probably going to kill me for this, but she congrat, graduated from the Northwest Women's Leadership Academy, so good job, Angela, and taking that course. I want to give kind of a special shout out to our I T and our operations guys for getting this room put together. I know those guys in the back, back there, worked really hard along with some people from operations. Very impressed with the way it ran tonight. Good job, guys. Very much appreciated.
Thank you, Ron.
And last, also want to thank our library staff for sharing this space with us. There's obviously some change for them, right, so that we're here, and we appreciate that, and we'll work through any bumps that we have there with the library, but we do appreciate Kendra and her staff and the help that they've given us to get this thing going. So with that, I can answer any questions that you may have.
Okay, seeing none. Any items from council?
I'd like to bring up, I happen to live three houses down from the house that had the fatality with the explosion, and I was reached out to by a member of the city. I know that's a concern there. I've lived on that street, my family has since nineteen sixty-five. Mike Tiverbaugh, who owns that house, lives in that house, has lived there for a long time. It's the only place he has to go. I feel for the people of the concerns around him. I've never experienced threatening behavior from that household myself. I don't think it's a place where drugs are trafficked. Mike falls in with people who are helping him that seem to take advantage of him. That's a rough situation for there for that guy. I think that it's a possibly substandard place for him to be living, but I feel for him, I don't know what we can do for him, he doesn't have a whole lot of choices. So I was reached out by somebody, and I know there's some some serious concern from the Andorlik Manor next door of what could have happened. I think, and Frank might know more about, I'm sure knows more about, there was no drugs being made there. There was oxygen bottles that exploded, I think, and maybe they were cooking with propane, but that's just a, that's more of a homelessness issue to me than it is necessarily a drug issue, and I feel bad for the people who are affected by it, as I have been myself.
Thank you. Anybody else have comments? I'm going to make one quick one. I just wanted to do a big thank you and a big shout out to our first responders over the Strawberry Festival, all of them, but particularly our police department for their their presence and their support. You guys were all over the place, of course, during the Strawberry Festival, and I know there must have been a lot of long hours and extra care and just an ongoing commitment to our community during that time, so just thank you for keeping us all safe and for another safe and wonderful Strawberry Festival, so thank you.
I would like to give some credence to the lady who came and talked to us. I think there does need to be some sort of standards for what reserves you a spot, and that's not a huge issue, I think, in our overall scheme of things, but somebody putting down masking tape on a spot, it almost opens it up to somebody peeling that masking tape off and stealing that spot. There should be some kind of limits to that, and if, we know who's complaining about it, she's talking about, she hears it on the buzz and stuff. Yes, people are going to be mad about that, but I don't think there is any standard, I don't think there's anything right now that would stop me from putting a chair out for next year, right?
It's a little early. It's a little early.
I will add that, you know, one of the things that we do, starting Thursday night, basically, because that's when you start having the chairs be putting up there and whatnot, is we do make sure that the pathways are clear and there's no blockage or anything of that, and if there is, we simply just move them out of the way, so I do want to make that point. But generally, we don't start seeing things being set out until Thursday night, and it's usually a good thing to see that.
Yes, yes, I just wanted to, I want to address her concern. I think it's valid.
Thank you. Are there, would anyone from the public or the press like to address the council? Seeing none. The next scheduled meeting where mayor, the mayor will be back in the seat, thankfully, will be July ninth with a council work session starting at five o'clock and the regular meeting starting at six.